Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to the special meeting of the Sacramento Housing Authority. As I said last time, the Housing Authority sits usually concurrently with the City Council and the members of the City Council, members of the Housing Authority, and vice versa. We are breaking out the Housing Authority agenda and will continue to do so so that the issues of housing and homelessness get that focused attention that we all know that they need. And so, let us call the roll and establish a quorum for the Housing Authority.
Thank you. Member Warren, Member Harris, Member Hanson, Member Shanir, Member Guerra, Member Jennings, and Mayor Steinberg.
Here. And of course, we're joined, joined at my left by LaChelle Dozier, who is the Executive Director of the Sacramento Housing and Redevelopment Agency, SHRA, in lieu of the City Manager, because again, this is the Housing Authority. Be glad to explain that to anybody for an hour and a half after the meeting, if you would like. Okay. Let us begin. We have one item, but it is an important item, and it is the so-called Hundred Day Challenge Response and update on our five-point homeless plan. Here we go. Ms. Dozier, do I turn it to you or what do I? We turn it to staff. Okay. Very good. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and members of the Council and Chair of the Housing Authority Board and members of the Housing at the Board.
That's right. I'm not the mayor anymore. I'm the chair.
My name is Sarah O'Daniel, and I'm with the Sacramento Housing and Redevelopment Agency. And I'm here to provide you with an update on the five-point homeless plan and share information related to the Emergency Bridge Housing Initiative that ties into one of the five initiatives. As context, in October and again in December of 2019, SHRA staff presented a five-point homeless plan for the city of Sacramento. This plan focused on a variety of initiatives that spanned the continuum of housing. The scattered site model that focuses on master leasing 50 scattered site housing units for homeless women and children, including domestic violence survivors. The Safe Parking Lot Initiative, which is looking at overnight parking for 20 vehicles, including recreational vehicles, and providing assistance for up to 120 days. The Sleeping Tents and Cabins Initiative, where we are looking at providing cabins or sturdy tents with wraparound services. And we're also looking at modular multifamily units for transitional housing. The fourth initiative is Motel Conversion, where we are looking at other conversions similar to Capital Park. And the last initiative, of course, is building permanent supportive housing. To provide you with an update on some of these initiatives, related to the scattered site model, we have identified a potential service provider, and we are working with owners on developing master lease agreements. We will be back before you shortly with more details. Regarding the Safe Parking Lot Program, it has been challenging finding a suitable site. We will be reaching out to the faith community to see if there are any other collaborative opportunities on their properties. And we have contacted a community-based organization related to services. Regarding the Tent and Cabin Initiative, we will talk more about the launch of the Emergency Bridge Housing or Cabin Initiative shortly, but also wanted to let you know that we are working on citing options and the costs for modular units. Related to Motel Conversion, we are working with a developer on a potential motel site. Currently, the developer is in negotiations for that property. As for permanent supportive housing, we will continue to identify funding and look forward to resources from the Affordable Housing Trust Fund to build units and leverage federal and state resources in the near future. I do want to point out that by October, we will be closing down the current operations at Capital Park, and after renovations at Capital Park Hotel, we will be converting those to 92 brand-new permanent supportive housing units in downtown Sacramento. Transitioning back to the Cabin Initiative. Up soon after the five-point plan presentation in December, Governor Newsom came forward with a Hundred Day Challenge to fight homelessness. He challenged cities in California to step up and house the homeless quickly with innovative and unique ideas, and the mayor and council rose to that challenge. In January, you adopted a shelter crisis declaration, which further emphasized the urgency to house the homeless. To put things in perspective, based on the 2019 point-in-time count, there are 5,570 individuals who are homeless, 70% of which are unsheltered. That amounts to around 3,900. 415 are homeless transitional aged youth between the ages of 18 and 24 years of age. Of these youths, almost 60% or 244 are unsheltered, which are some sobering statistics. Homelessness is an individual journey, but it impacts the whole community. And at this time, we are proposing 24 cabins to be placed on a vacant parcel on Grove Avenue adjacent to St. Paul's Church of God in Christ in Council District 2, to house 48 unsheltered homeless transitional age youth between the ages of 18 and 24. Pastor Joyner of the church has been a tremendous partner with us. He recognized the need to help the homeless. His passion is to work with disconnected youth. In fact, he ran a group home at this site for 30 years, and he has many youth programs taking place on Thursdays. For him, this was a win-win situation. He had a vacant parcel of land, and it was focusing on youth, on the transitional age youth. He has stepped up, and he is our partner, offering this parcel of vacant land next to the church. In addition, there is a strong network of community-based organizations that also want to be part of this youth initiative. While this is an initial startup, we want to take 48 unsheltered homeless transitional age youth off the street and house them in 24 double occupancy cabins using a housing-first model. This is the startup phase, with the goal of transitioning them within six to 12 months. You may ask, why did we choose the transitional age youth population or the TAE population? There are many reasons. This is a very vulnerable population. Many have suffered significant trauma, including human trafficking, sexual abuse, and abandonment. The TAE have a hard time adjusting to sleeping in the regular shelters with adults. Their trauma is unique, and it is better for them to have their own living quarters. While the city has increased the capacity of shelter beds, we still don't have enough to serve our unsheltered TAE population. In fact, there are 71 beds for TAE at this time. Also very important, this is a young population that if we help them stabilize now, they are less likely to become chronically homeless in the future. This is a picture of what the cabin would look like. Based on an RFP that was issued in January, Tough Sheds received the award. I want to talk a little bit about the amenities that are proposed at this site. The property on Grove Avenue is gated, and there needs to be some construction work that needs to take place on the vacant parcel, like grading and leveling of the site, removal of a house foundation, and tree removal before the cabins can be placed on this site. As mentioned, there will be 24 double occupancy cabins for 48 transitional age youth. We will have portable restrooms and showers, including an ADA-accessible unit onsite. Laundry service will be available, as well as meals will be brought in. Trailer will be also added for administrative services for case management services. In addition, the adjacent church is also the site for a food bank pickup location so the youth can supplement their meals. Hopefully, it is all healthy supplements to their meals. Security cameras will be placed around the property and will be monitored 24 hours a day, seven days a week, by a person onsite. Regarding entry to the program, we are developing a youth-centric coordinated referral system between the Continuum of Care, service providers that specialize in youth services, and the site operator. This is similar type of coordination that's working well with Capital Park, and we want to replicate this process. There will be no queues outside the gates waiting for cabins or services. Related to the actual services, they are going to be tailored for the transitional age youth. We are embarking on a collaboration between Wind Youth Services, Waking the Village, Lutheran Social Services, the Community College, Consumers River College, the site operator, First Step Communities, along with our Continuum of Care Sacramento Steps Forward. We anticipate services to be provided both onsite and offsite by both the service provider -- service providers and the site operator. So truly, wraparound services, but they are not just limited to intense case management, behavioral health, anger management, life skills training, linking to education, employment, financial literacy, wellness, and a lot more. There will also be transportation that will be provided so staff can take them offsite to appointments or do whatever is necessary to stabilize the youth. The goal is to utilize the housing-first model, have the TAE surrounded with case management, stabilize them, and transition them into housing. We are also looking to sole source with First Step Communities to be the operator of the site. They have a lot of experience working with the homeless. They collaborated with staff on the Winter Sanctuary Program and are currently working on the North A Center. So in addition to providing case management onsite, they will be in charge of cabin preparation and turns, coordinating the laundry service, coordinating the meal service coming onsite, overseeing the onsite video surveillance, having a campus manager there all the time, coordinating the janitorial service, grounds operations, equipment maintenance and repair, and coordinating the sanitation services. In addition to the amenities and the services provided to the TAE, we also want to make sure that the surrounding neighborhood members are comfortable with this new emergency shelter operation in their community. A meeting was held last night under the leadership of Councilmember Warren, and we heard many questions, some concerns, and lots of thoughts. We take this very seriously, and we will process all of them. But overall, the community overall, they realize that we collectively need to help the larger community. In fact, many wanted to volunteer and help with this initiative. We will also have very close coordination with the North Area Sacramento Police Department, and we are already working with them to develop a security plan. We will also develop a forum to communicate with the community on a regular basis. Regarding the budget, to launch 24 cabins to house anywhere from 48 up to 192 TAE if all units turn within six months, $5.6 million is required for a two-year period. This is for the construction, operations, intensive case management, outreach, lease payments, rehousing, and maintenance. At this time, in partnership with the city, we have applied for state funds through the Homeless Housing Assistance and Prevention Program, or the H-HAP funds. While the state promises to move very quickly to allocate the funds, in order for us to launch the project now and be ready by March and meet the Hundred Day Challenge, we are requesting for the project to be approved and are requesting for $1.5 million from the city to pay for construction and setting up the operational structure for a five-month period while state funds are being allocated and grant funds are executed. The city would enter into an inter-fund loan against the general fund to be paid back by the state grant funds. Once the project is approved, we will immediately start grading and leveling the site and doing all the other construction work that's necessary. We can purchase the cabins, the restrooms, the shower trailers, enter into a contract with the onsite provider, and work through many of the logistics to make this project happen and launch within the next 30 days. We are working very fast to get this project up and running, and it will be a great day when we launch and take 48 TAE off the streets and put a roof, even though it's a small roof, but a roof over their heads. So this concludes my presentation. We do have some of our partners in the audience, and I would also like to read into the record that there was a change to the Housing Authority Resolution. And on page two, it should say "The Housing Authority" and not "The City Council" resolves as follows. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Excellent report. Appreciate it. Do we want to hear really -- I want to, of course, give Councilmember Warren a chance to start here. Of course, I also want to make sure that we hear from some of the partners that are acknowledged in the resolution here. But let's start with Councilman Warren.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to say that, you know, this project is the result of a lot of hard work, and it's also a result of the governor and the mayor putting to the council this Hundred Day Challenge and wanting to do our part in District 2. We know we have a sizable homeless population in District 2, as most parts of the city has, but we have to start taking steps to address it and to do it in a responsible way. I think this could not have been accomplished in District 2 this quickly without Pastor Joyner and his leadership in the congregations of St. Paul. I want to thank you, sir. I know you've been given to the community for over 30 years, you know, and so this is another example of that. But I also want to say there are other projects in the city, you know, that other council members are working on bringing forth proposals. You touched on some of them earlier. I know Councilmember Guerra and I have talked about a proposal that he hopes to bring forward here at some point soon. And so, this could be another one of those steps that are pieces of this puzzle that we're trying to put together that, at the end of the day, hopefully, will result in a significant number of reduction of our homeless population. I also have to thank Steve Waters and his team, who has been -- as long as I've been on the council, Steve and his team have tried and have been working on and implementing strategies to deal with the homelessness issue, and so I want to thank him. I think this is another opportunity to really make a statement in that regard. I want to thank SHRA and their staff, LaChelle and your team. Thank you very much for continuing to provide leadership. Tyrone and all of you who have really been, I think, responding to this call. And then lastly, I want to thank the community of District 2. Last night, we had a community meeting, very cordial community meeting. The questions that were asked were principled questions. They were not "we don't want this in our neighborhood" type of questions. It was really more responsible about how are we going to deal with any things that needed to be mitigated. And we've touched on that here today, and so I think that this has been well thought out. There's still some work that needs to be done, but hopefully, in the next 60 days, we can have a project that we will all be able to point to and say, this is one of the major steps in moving the city forward. And so again, thank you, Mayor, and your leadership in pushing all of us also, and the governor and his challenge, but to all the folks that have worked on it. So thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Warren. I'm going to thank you. I'm going to save all my thank yous in my comments after the public testimony. Let's hear from the public, which I know includes some of the partners that are referred to in the resolution. Go ahead.
Thank you. I have seven speakers. The first is Mike Jasky, then McWorthy, then Ralph James.
Jasky, nice to see you. We have two minutes. Go ahead.
Good afternoon. My name is Mike Jasky, representing Sacramento-area congregations together. Our Homeless and Housing Committee provided comments to you numerous times in the past. SACDAC is pleased to support the project before you today. Many of our committee have had firsthand experience working with Steve Waters of First Step Communities when they are the operator of the county's Winter Sanctuary Program. Most of us understand the limitations of the rotating church model and the inadequate services such a program is able to provide to guests. There's a strong component of case management, youth appropriate services, and rehousing services as key parts of this project. That's essential. It's welcome. The TAE-oriented youth providers that First Steps is bringing to this project are also critical to its success. Emerging research shows that there are important distinctions between homeless youth and homeless adults that need to be taken into consideration in how this project provides services to its guests, and Ms. O'Daniel mentioned that same point. Finally, I think you want to require that an evaluation of this project be carried out so we can understand how it's working and improve components as needed. Most of the innovative projects that have been or will be brought before you as part of SHRA's five-point plan need formal evaluation to determine whether they should be replicated. If this is already understood as part of the agreement, then there's no harm in making it a requirement. If it's not understood to be part of the agreement, then that's an omission and needs to be rectified before the contract is signed on the dotted line. Thank you for your consideration of this project.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Ms. Jasky. And you're right on the evaluation piece. We'll make sure that that is embedded in everything that we do and that we report We'll make sure that that is embedded in everything that we do and that we report back regularly. Make sure that's either added to the resolution or just confirmed that it's intended as part of the resolution.
Thank you.
Okay.
McWorthy, then Ralph James.
First of all, people, we ain't seen no report from the neighborhood on this. And why? And why? Furthermore, this is a band-aid because it's a sanctuary city in Donshump coming. This is the information that I'm going to encourage the people that he going to put on their ground. Now, church, people, black people, the church have been hanging your money since slavery. That's where we ain't got nothing. That's where we ain't got nothing. The preacher, 90% of them has no knowledge of finance. You got to understand that. Now, that property in deficit heights was taken from the black neighborhood, like commercial, and become a residential. Why couldn't we have Antoine? Antoine got six officers here in Sacramento and not one black person working it off. Antoine, I got some information coming up from L.A. If I can get the right attorney, we going at it. I'm going to turn this over to Donshump. The housing, nobody in Detroit, and many relatives in Detroit, know nothing about the Housing Secretary, because he's a slave. He's a slave, that all he is. He knows no knowledge of no housing. So people, this here, when we said, "Dale Robinson, youth specialists," that's where they come up. There's something happening over there. It's the reason you burn Dale Robinson. We going to show that. I'm going to keep after it until we find out which project that Dale want. I had to hit my wife and a girl here when Danny Dorserius go out there and listen, because SHRA will take the neighborhood program and have a slave base that you go through, the white folks, your children to be raised. That's what's happening, people. Where's our economic base? We will never have one as long as you stay with nonprofit, because they have access to everything you got. Go free enterprise, people, and see what Antoine getting the money that...
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Our next speaker is Ralph James, then Larry Joyner.
Good afternoon. I want to take this opportunity to thank the council for allowing me to make some comments today. Nearly 30 years ago, I was one of the youth that went through Pastor Joyner's youth program. I was kind of a wayward kid, making some poor choices, and headed in the wrong direction. Through my time with Mr. Joyner, I received the kind of support that I needed to help me make changes for the better. After leaving this program, Pastor Joyner played a role in allowing me to enlist in the military, which led to me gaining my college degree, which led to about a 20-year career in the IT field. A family with four kids. My oldest has graduated from Sac State and is attending post-grad to become a pharmacist. In addition, I've been exposed to home ownership and to entrepreneurship. So from time to time, I think how things might have been had I not had the sort of support that Pastor Joyner lent to me and my family. Today, as you hear my story, I want you to know that these types of programs are important, and they make a difference in helping people who have less get to a point where they can reach their full potential and make positive contributions to Sacramento and beyond. Thanks for your consideration.
Thank you so much, sir, for coming down today and sharing your story.
Next speaker is Larry Joyner, then Marsha Fritz.
Pastor Joyner, welcome.
Oh, thank you. It's my pleasure to be here on this evening to address the city council and SHRA. I tell you, I enjoy the opportunity to work together with our community and our city. I know a lot of people think that it's not a good combination, but for the last 30 years, I've worked with licensing, probation, all those different things. So it's just that we need to do something to make it happen. We have two churches, one, St. Paul Inside the Wall, which is about 50 members, then we have St. Paul Outside the Wall. And Outside the Wall has been calling me and talking to me, trying to see, are we going to make this happen? And I've been promising that we're going to make this happen, no matter who come and talk about how bad it is or what's going on. But I know for sure, if we put in the time and we put in the love, that we could change lives of our children that's out there. When I had the residential care home for boys, the juvenile hall, it was some of the worst kids in Sacramento County. And I kept seeing these children at 18 leave and then go downtown and sleep outside, get in trouble. So we always know we needed a transitional type of housing for them to be in. So it's my pleasure to have the opportunity to try to help our young people that are here today, and I would appreciate it if each and every one of you would vote so we'd have that opportunity to change lives and not just talk. Thank you.
Next speaker is Marsha Fritz, then Jamar Jefferson.
Thank you. I'm Marsha Fritz, and I'm representing the Sacramento Taxpayers Association. I sit on their board. I applaud this SHRA for proposing temporary shelter and siding it for homeless on vacant land next to a church facility to transition our homeless youth to permanent housing. The sheds, though, are one step up from tents, and they average, when you consider all the build-out that's required to facilitate, you know, for laundry and kitchen and bathroom facilities, $36,000 a unit. The labor cost to manage it and to provide these supplemental services for security meals, laundry, hygiene, sanitation, and community engagement and administration is $30,000 per guest over a six-month cycle, and it doesn't include maintenance, property lease, rehousing stipends that you award to the guests upon their successful transition. I strongly suggest you reconsider using park-model RVs instead of tough sheds. A park-model RV, and I'm providing you an example of it, both pictures of what it looks like inside, and the floor plan will house four individuals. You only need 12 instead of 24. The cost, the retail cost, I just checked with the manufacturer who is based in California, these are built in California, $38,000 retail for a single one. You can probably get a cheaper price wholesale. It's all-inclusive, they roll on wheels. The city of Los Angeles just approved an ordinance last week to accept park-model RVs on wheels as ADUs. So they're all, and San Diego has done the same thing. $38,000. Also, it'll provide a showcase to the neighborhood of what they can do in their own backyards for elderly people that want to transition and downsize.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete.
Fritz, thank you for constructive comments. We appreciate it. There may be some questions on what you asked. Thank you.
Next speaker is Jamar Jefferson, and then Steve Waters.
Hold on, hold on before you start my time. I need this working, because people need to see this. I need this working, please. Can you see that? There you go. Now we can get started. How you doing? I'm Jamar Jefferson. I'd like to acknowledge y'all. Y'all were my creator. Moment of silence. Thank you. Now, you're talking about giving cabins to youth. This is what they did back in slavery. You ought to be ashamed of yourself. I was at this event yesterday, and the community don't want it. I was in the creek behind his house. Massive. Y'all think you? Plantations. You trying to give people cabins and outhouses, modern-day outhouses. Your grandma, you wouldn't want your grandma to experience this, and your children, you will be ashamed of this. If the sin of God's, he wouldn't even live in this, and he owns the property. False prophets. He's trying to get paid to do something God told him to do for free, and you will give a taxpayer's dollars to this after the fact? Y'all said y'all been broke? You been having budget restraint since 2010, so you couldn't even fund the general, what, campaign financing? Now, the message you money, we know we didn't get none of that. I ran the opposition against you. Each and every last one, you got over $30,000 pay raise. He make almost, what he, said he managed $300,000, money for everybody. My generation came to fall for your terrible business decisions. I'm praying that you all get, I think you said you wanted to ignore city code. I'm praying that y'all make that mistake. I hope you do. Y'all going to basically get rid of city code? Because there's a lot of city codes I want to get rid of, like the 50-plus-one. I am so excited about your inability to be effective leaders. Nobody out there wants this in their homes? Get it out of every commercial and residential area. Put them in land park and try to see what happened. Put it on the other side of Delta Shores. That's where I want to put them. Put them in North Natomas. It's perfectly ready for it. You should be ashamed of yourselves, because you wouldn't live in it, but you want youth, and you're not even going for all of them.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete.
No, no, you going to hear this. Don't rush me. No, you excuse me. You ought to be ashamed...
Two minutes, sir. That's it. You're done. Mr. Jefferson. Mr. Jefferson, we all get two minutes.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Our next speaker is Steve Waters.
Mr. Waters. Mr. Waters. Mr. Jefferson. Okay.
You're ashamed of yourself. All of y'all got nonprofits. Shameful.
Good. Mr. Waters.
We need to recall everybody.
Okay.
Shameful. And y'all going to be...
Thank you. Good evening. Mr. Waters.
Next speaker is Steve Waters, and then Robin Rose Hayman.
I think I know everyone. I'm Steve Waters. I'm here to speak in support of this program. I'm very happy to be here today. I think we've worked, all of us, a long time to get to this point. I want to express how well this is coming together, working with SHRA and Pastor Joyner, and how optimistic I am about working with the various youth organizations and the other groups that we collaborate with already. I'm very excited about what we can do for homeless youth. I think that with Pastor Joyner's experience working with youth at this church and with the expertise we'll bring in and the collaborators, we will have a fine program for you. As you know, I believe that the cabins provide privacy and dignity, and I believe that is the same for TAE youth as it is for the chronically homeless that we serve. I think this will be an excellent opportunity to prove the model in. I am working closely with the SHRA folks on the design of the community and the design of these cabins. I think we're going to have an excellent project. I just wanted to come up and thank you, lend my support, and also say that I'm here if there's any questions.
Well, I just want to, I was going to save it for my comments, but I want to thank you.
Thank you.
Talk about persistence and commitment and belief that we can all do good things together. You've hung in there. I know that you did the Winter Sanctuary, which was important but temporary, and, you know, in some ways, today, with this vote, we will be launching Steve Waters' vision here, and greatly appreciate you and the fact that you have hung in there through thick and thin with us and our city. So thank you, sir.
I appreciate that comment, and I just want to say that there's a lot of supporters that have been helping me along the way.
No doubt.
I won't take all the credit.
But still.
Thank you.
We know. Thank you.
Robin Rose Hayman is our final speaker on this item.
Good afternoon, Robin Rose Haymer. Pardon my poor penmanship. I just wanted to come before you and say thank you very much for the consideration and the opportunity to house youth. It is a challenge and a avocation of all of the youth providers to be able to create the conditions where programming can occur. And by starting this initial foray into being housed, youth can start the process of becoming eligible to live their self-determined lives. It's very difficult from a stress standpoint, from a mental health standpoint, to think about what you want to be when you grow up if you don't have any place to live. And while the conditions aren't ideal, we would all love, you know, beautiful homes and four walls and all of the amenities. It's important to be able to be someplace where you can dream. And so while I am just one of the youth providers, or representing one of the youth providers who will be working with the youth who will be housed in the cabin community, I am here with the full weight and support of both Waking the Village and Lutheran Social Services. Neither Bridget nor Kate could be here tonight, but to say thank you very much for this opportunity, and we look forward to working with the young people who will be housed at the cabin community. And make myself available, should there be any programming questions that you'd like to ask.
Thank you. Thank you as well for hanging in there and your good work.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. All right, I'm going to turn it over to Councilman Harris. I have some comments. We'll take a motion in a second, and we will vote. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate it. First, I'd like to thank First Step Communities, Steve and Ron and Bill Knowlton, you know, everybody on the board, as the mayor said, for being persistent in your vision. I've been working with Mr. Waters on the North A Street Shelter. He's proven his ability to work with difficult populations, and I think has demonstrated that he's capable of a really stellar job in terms of managing a project like this. So it gives me great confidence, Mr. Mayor, that First Step will be the provider in this particular situation. This is the first time we've attempted a tiny home or a cabin, sleeping cabin type of project in the city of Sacramento, although myself and Councilmember Warren have talked to Steve Waters for the last five years about various iterations of this kind of configuration. And I'm excited to work with First Step on a proposal for North Gate as well, but this is really a proving ground, and so I think it's a pretty wonderful thing to embark on overall. I would like to take the concept and actually fulfill the vision of First Step Communities and really create a transitional housing community in the future if the opportunity avails itself. But thank you also, Pastor Joyner, for being amenable to this and being a player in the homelessness conundrum, because there are many populations, and you focused on youth, which is, again, a very vulnerable population. So it's exciting to get a project like this going. I do have a couple of questions, Sarah, if you might come up. So on the matrix displaying the costs, I just wanted to ask you about a couple of items here. You know, I'll say this, having worked on the railroad shelter, that we found that creating transitional opportunities for the homeless community, homeless populations, is expensive. It's also expensive to deal with homeless population on the street. You know, at the last point in time when we did a cost of homelessness report at my request in 2015, we were spending at that time almost $15 million a year on the homeless population, not getting them into housing, just dealing with them on the street. The cost has gone up quite considerably since then in the city of Sacramento. Last time, we took a look at it, but we are gathering more data to get a comprehensive look. It's closer to $19 million or more at this point. So, you know, homelessness costs the city a lot of money either way, with people living on the street or moving them into transitional housing. Of course, we prefer the latter, and we're finally at the point, largely because our mayor has been so effective in gathering resources from the state, that we now have the opportunity to do a lot more to get people into housing and on the road to recovery. But what I wanted to ask you about specifically was the number for outreach, $600,000. So if you could tell me what that encompasses.
Yes, actually, it's also going to be some case management as well. There's going to be outreach and case management. So we're going to be working with Sacramento Steps Forward, as well as all the youth providers in order to, again, do outreach. But as mentioned in my presentation, we're going to have not only case management onsite with First Step Communities, but also case management with our youth providers as well.
So some of this $600,000 would go to off-site services?
Yes, as well.
Okay. Because you did have a line item for case management, $23,000. Is that onsite?
No, that is just like emergency for the really hard-to-house. It's just extra. But this outreach category, it does include case management. So there's going to be robust case management onsite as well as onsite. We should have put case management on there as well.
Okay, and then under administration, the staffing number, $340,000, what does that entail?
That is going to entail the direct staff that will be working on this project.
Well, so staff... Well, so, staff for First Step or staff for SHRA?
For SHRA. So, SHRA staff that would have to be assigned to work on this project.
Okay, and then operational oversight is also SHRA?
That's going to be for all of our administrative departments, you know, finance, IT, just all the other departments.
Okay. So, you know, as a contractor, when I build a bid, of course, you try to build in every kind of cost that you can imagine so that there's enough money to complete the project. Is it your hope, or is it your thought, that some of these numbers are adequate to cover extraneous circumstances, and this project might actually be less money in the end than, as enumerated in this report? Or you think it's pretty accurate?
At this point, we have, we think it is quite accurate. However, it's really hard, because this is a model, a brand-new project. And so, it's really hard to say, and you're dealing with the transitional age youth population as well. So, you know, they have unique challenges. You know, every population has different challenges. So, really, really hard to say how it's going to end up, but we did our best guesstimate in terms of what we think the costs are going to be.
So, I know that you had to work very quickly on this. I mean, extremely quickly.
Yes.
I'm interested in the possibility of doing conditioning of the spaces of the sleeping cabins for heating and cooling. You know, that's, I think, a very important piece, rather than just living in a tough shed. And I hope that you are looking forward, through the course of this project, over two years, to encompass that piece. I know it's important to a lot of members of the community, but we don't want this to be just tents with plywood sides, but actually real living space, and to be comfortable, clearly, in the summer, you know, some cooling is going to be required. I understand that these are insulated, and that was part of what you did in your procurement, and that's an important piece. But I would definitely like to keep an eye, moving forward, to making these conditioned spaces.
And I would like to turn it over to Mr. Shields, who'd like to answer that.
Use your outside voice.
I can do that, okay. I can. What I wanted to let you know is that we're working with, we're working with S-MUD, and they have donated 50 portable air conditioning/heating units that we will be putting into each one of the units.
That's great to hear, so thank you for that feedback. Well, that being said, I'm perfectly happy to move this item and, you know, accept the resolution.
How about I move it? One second.
How about that?
There we go. That's teamwork. Love it.
Motion, motion by Councilmember Warren.
Look at that. Love it. Councilman Jennings, and before I close here.
Thank you, Mayor. One of our speakers came up and said that these type of programs are game changers. And a couple of speakers got up and talked about some negative things about the potential of this kind of a program for our youth and what it may appear that we're doing. But these are the kind of programs that are game changers. And Mr. James came up and talked about being a part of that game-changing plan 30 years ago, where he could have gone in a totally different direction. If it had not been for Pastor Joyner and the programs that you had in place, he may not be here to give us the kind of conversation today. He may not be here to be a father for the four children that he has. He may not have graduated from college. But it was a game changer, and instead of being homeless and on the street, you had a supportive family that surrounded you with love and everything that you needed in order to reach your full potential. And I think that's what this thing is all about. It's about talking about, how do we help these kids reach their full potential? The kids that we don't know, that we can't identify by name right now. We don't even know who's going to walk through that door. But I'm impressed with everything I see about the program, and Councilmember Warren did a great job of thanking everybody but himself. And Councilmember Warren, I just want you to know that we need these kind of programs. We need a pilot just to get out there in order for the rest of these programs to take off. We need other communities to see this happening, and you've made it happen in your community. I believe you for your word when you tell me that you met with your community last night, and your community was supportive. They had questions, as all communities will, but they were supportive of moving forward. I believe Pastor Joyner, when he says, "This is what that property was meant to be," and that it's going to change lives. And so, I'm in big support of this program. I believe you've got everything in the right place. The youth services that we will have for these kids will open up doors that they don't even know exist right now. And so, I know more and more communities will come onboard, youth services, nonprofits will come forward and try to help these kids to truly reach their full potential. So, the entire community of Sacramento will come together in order to do that. And so, I just want to throw my full support behind this program, but I also want to make sure that we know that this is just a starting point for all of the five-point plan to be realized. And so, I'm happy to see it happening right now.
Thank you, Councilman Jennings. Councilmember Shinnear.
Thank you, Mayor. Few questions. I don't know, Steve, maybe for you to start off with?
Steve Waters?
Yeah. So, I want to second the persistence part. We've been talking about this for nine years, so I think this is great. I think this is incredibly important, and while, to sum it, may seem expensive, when you look at the long-term benefits of this, literally saving lives and putting folks into the community, it's going to be very inexpensive as we look at that long term. Could you talk a little bit about the youth-serving organizations that you're working with? We had one person come up, but how does that look? Because it's a different situation than working with adults and with some of the folks that you've worked with before.
Yes, thank you. It is a little bit different situation. However, with the Winter Sanctuary, the last three years, we worked directly with WIND, and they referred their clients into our shelter nightly through the winters the last three years. We'll continue to be working with WIND, and I believe with the help of SHRA, there's a coalition being put together, which will include Wake the Village, and I believe Lutheran Social Services, Youth Services, and all of us. We'll start meeting, actually, later this week and putting together plans. I also have someone that was on my staff the first year when we started working with WIND, who is a specialist in working with at-risk youth, and she'll be joining me again as a consultant to help guide the formation of a program.
Okay. I want to give you kudos on, and I don't know if this was you or who put together all of this, but the fact that you're doing youth mental health first aid for these young people is incredibly important. So, thank you for including that. What I'd hope also is, you know, we are doing, I think, some very good training within YIPSY, within the Department of Youth Parks and Community Enrichment, around youth development and a set of principles. So, I'm hoping that you can hook up, it's probably with Kim Moller at this point, who's doing that training, to put your folks through that training as well, which is really around the youth development campaign plan that this council adopted almost two years ago, or a little over two years ago. So, I think that training can be helpful as we work with young people as well.
Very interested.
Yeah, so, we can talk about that. So, that was my question for you. I had, I don't know, I think this is SHRA. I'm looking at page 19 of the report, and you have a set of outcomes that you want, which I think is great. Who's actually, Sarah, maybe this is you, who's going to be responsible? You have a set of metrics. We don't really talk about an evaluation, per se. So, who is going to be responsible for coming back to the council with kind of those ultimate results on this?
Just finding the page real quick.
Yeah, I don't think it matters where it is as much as bottom line.
Our agency, we would be, we would be here providing the information back to you, based on working with all the various partners.
Okay, so, and how will we, once you get a timeline for how these go in, I would hope within six months or so you can come back. I think that what you've done on Capitol Park, just as a weekly, is fabulous, and I appreciate, I know you added a few things since we've talked about that. If we could do something like that as well, where you're talking continuously about how many young people we've got, what the results are, how many were moving into permanent housing, that would be great as well. I'd have a couple other concerns, and this is not just here, but overall. On the case management piece, one of the services is behavioral health. I know we have a severe lack of professionals in that area, so I'm hoping, I don't know exactly where that comes from. We have some organizations, and maybe reaching out to Sac State around their social services department as well, might be a good thing here.
Can I just, on that, I would also suggest peers are very powerful, and you could break some ground here, too, in terms of employing peers to provide some of that mental health. Council, sorry, Jay.
No, that's okay. I'm kind of used to it. On this day, it's not just you. The other thing, what I'd hope also is that we could get a little bit more of a specific breakdown on the budget. Mr. Harris asked a lot of questions, but I think we're still pretty general on that. So, if we can get kind of a budget narrative to go along with the budget, that would be great. So, thank you, and we appreciate you doing this. I mean, this is really important. I think this is a big step forward as a piece of the larger puzzle. We have to, definitely have to take care of ten people and give them an opportunity to be successful, so that's what this is about.
So, thank you all very much, Council. Just a couple of closing comments. I want to say my thank yous, of course, but I want to note, first off, how today, in the public testimony and in the council questions, and even in the reports of the community meeting that I got last night, there were a lot of hard questions asked, a lot of appropriate questions, and yet very little drama. And I think that in and of itself is a sign of how far we have come here. When you think about a year, year and a half ago, two years ago, we're creating a norm here, which is, which really is based on the following: We are going to do more here. We're going to answer the hard questions. We're going to, we're going to make the necessary compromises. We're going to do the appropriate outreach, but we are not stepping back because it's hard. We're going to just do. And the more we do, and the more volume we create, I believe, the easier it will get, especially as we prove our success here. And so, just note the lack of drama, and that's a good thing. I want to thank, yes?
And I know you want to close it out, but if I could just say thank you to Sarah, who did the presentation with LaShelle last night and today personally. I didn't call your name when you were at the podium, and I wanted to do that and make reference, so thank you for the work that you've done on this, okay?
Well, that's very good. Thank you, of course. I want to thank the agency, LaShelle, your team. Sarah, thank you very, very much. You have taken the charge very seriously, and you're doing exactly what I hoped and wanted, and that we all wanted, this sense of urgency, to be able to get this project up sometime in March, and then to know that there's a second half of it to come soon thereafter, which gets us to 100 beds. I want to thank you, because it's exactly what it is. We ask for it. Councilmember Warren, thank you again for just stepping up, and again, no drama, making sure it's right, but getting to yes and getting to yes easily. And for you and Jay and Jeff Harris, who have worked with Steve Waters for a long time here, you know, to really not lose hope and faith that we could actually take this from theory, from theory to reality. I also want to thank our city manager and his team as well, Howard, who really has been, who is a great leader, has also been a bridge here in every way to help us forge these new relationships. That includes your team, your entire team, you know, Chris and Amy and Emily. We are, as I said last week, you know, we are all a family here. Sometimes families fight, right? It's not always, but we are. And the agency is us, and we are the agency, and the City Economic Development Department is us, and we are them. We're together here, and we just want to keep reinforcing that, that there's nothing we can't do if we are all working well together as we are here. I appreciated Jeff Harris's comments and Marcia Fritz, too, you know? We may not agree on everything, but coming forward and making sure that we are focused on the numbers here, because for every dollar we save here, that's another dollar that can go into the next project. And so, it is really important that we keep that sharp pencil. And again, the city-agency collaboration, the new day, so to speak, may provide us some efficiencies around the administrative fee, around some of the operational oversight that may allow us to bring down some of these costs. I do put the costs into context, and I think about the Sprung Shelter and several million dollars to construct. Here, we're going to have long-term structures here, and, you know, it's less than $2 million to get to the full complement of 48, which is 96 people, if I'm reading that correctly. And so, yes, this costs money, but it's a lot more humane and a lot less costly than allowing young people, or any people, to continue to live on the street. I want to, you know, we've talked to LaShelle and Howard about this. I just want to reiterate one point that I make constantly privately, that I am fine with focusing on the TAY population. This is a very vulnerable population. We're going to have to make sure that as we implement our entire housing and navigation center and planning strategy, that we're not leaving out any particular population that may be even harder to serve, like single men. And we're not doing that, because we've got WX, you've got the Capitol Park Hotel. I just want to make sure that we continue to do that and that, though there is no undeserving TAY, young adult or child, that this project must focus on the point-in-time count and the unsheltered population, because we're trying as well to get people off the streets. Thank you to Pastor Joyner as well. I didn't mean to leave you out, sir, because you've carried this mantle for a long time, you and your team, and we would not be here without you. Finally, I hope that when you said, Sarah, six to 12 months average day, that may be actually realistic. I understand that the more we can endeavor to make that four to six months, because of the intensity, the case management, and the throughput that we're going to create through our broader housing trust fund, our other efficiency housing projects, then the more additional people we can get off the streets. But I'm just really grateful and happy that we have gotten to this point. And so, this is not the end by any means, but it's another significant step towards not just talking about it, but as somebody said earlier, actually doing something real to make it happen. Let's call, all those in favor, please say aye. Oppose, abstain, that passes unanimously, and thank you to everyone. That's the item, correct? Do we have anything else on this item? Okay, thank you. Let us, that's it. Are there council? You know what? That's a fair point. We did not do the Pledge of Allegiance. Well, it's never too late to salute the flag, so let's do it. Thank you, Mr. Jefferson. Why don't you lead us, by the way?
No, no, you the man. I want you to go. I'm a humble servant.
Okay. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Very good. Thank you, sir. Okay, we've got council comments? No? How about public testimony and items on the agenda? We do not, nothing else to come before this meeting of the Housing Authority. The city council, we are adjourned. Thank you. Thank you.
Oh, you're welcome. Thank you.